June 15, 2020, again via Zoom. Before we begin, I just wanted to some housekeeping issues. At our prior meeting, it was mentioned that we should all address ourselves by Mr. I just want to poll the board and first ask Mr. Fisher, can I call you Dennis?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Oxley, can I call you David?
Absolutely. You call me Ox if you want to, but I think Dave probably would be better, right?
I call you Kyle.
Absolutely.
And I'll call you Mr. Matt.
You could call me Mr. Matt, or you could call me John.
Yeah, or I could call you.
But you're not calling me Johnny.
I won't call you Johnson. So, yeah, because I just think that by first names, it makes us more of a relaxed board. Makes us more of a friendly board. Now, we could call ourselves Mr. Supervisor, or we could call ourselves Mr. by the last name, or maybe call me Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Treasurer. But I'm glad I got my permission to call four of you, or three of you by your first name. So let's proceed. I guess it's a, I guess it's a joke when somebody makes a mention and then, you know, they try to make some sort of grandstand, but, let's move forward. Dave, I think maybe an adjustment to the agenda, discuss the ordinance, or the ordinance that you're proposing for the businesses first, because the other ordinance will probably take the majority of our time. So why don't we?
Yeah.
Try to knock that one out first.
Yeah, this was modeled after the Montgomery Township resolution that allows businesses, merchants to undertake outdoor sales of merchandise and outdoor dining. Obviously, it requires the compliance with any and all CDC guidelines for social distancing, wearing of masks, et cetera. I tweaked it a little bit. I wanted the plan that they submitted with if they want to do this outside merchandise sales or dining to show exactly where everything is going to be located outdoors. It's got to be on private property. It can't be within the public right of way. And it certainly can't block any sidewalks or the ability of pedestrians or persons with disabilities to use the sidewalks. But, you know, again, it's something that I think everybody wants to see, especially our businesses. And it certainly can be done if the appropriate precautions are taken. So that's, that's before you. I, I know that the board in the past has not generally taken action at work sessions. You can, if you want to, if you feel that this is a time sensitive matter, make a motion to adopt a resolution if you wish, but I'm not, I'm not going to push that.
No, I think it should be done on a tele, or, you know, a televised session. But there's nothing to stop us from discussing it. We can.
Oh, no. No, no, no. By all means, discuss it. Yeah.
Open it up for discussion. Who would like to go first with?
I have one or two questions. I think they'll be really quick. What about some of the restaurants that have already started? Outdoor dining? They have some tables outside already. You know, how do we, is there, does that jeopardize that? Do they have to go, they have to stop and do the plan, or they just give us a plan?
I think we ought to approach them and say, look, we know you're, you're operating. Give us a plan so that we don't have a double standard between the ones who have opened and the ones who have been, I guess, good enough to, to wait. There have been some instances where folks have opened and did put tables and chairs on the sidewalks and were not restricted to private property and didn't take any appropriate actions for, to ensure appropriate parking. And we have contacted those folks. About two weekends ago, there was a lot of give and take between Micah on one hand and a restaurant bar owner on another hand, about where things were located and how they had to go about their, their outdoor business. So, yeah, some have jumped the gun, but I think we should treat everybody the same and ask for the same plan of attack from the folks who have opened already versus those who have not.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want them to have to, like, stop their outdoor dining and then restart it or wait for a plan. So, yeah.
Right. And again, we're, we're trying to work with these folks. Absolutely.
Then about the use of an open flame outside the building is prohibited. I did notice that was on the other ordinances. That doesn't affect like one or two of our restaurants. I think Harvest, for one, had a, had a an open flame.
Fire pit.
Pit area. That wouldn't affect them, or I don't even know if they've turned that on yet.
No.
Yeah, can't do it. No, go for it, David. I'm sorry.
No, no, I, I, I think that, look, anything, a barbecue, technically, a barbecue is, is an open flame, but obviously folks grill. You know, I, I don't think that's necessarily what they're talking about. Quite sure what an open flame is. I guess, I guess some kind of. If somebody wanted to sponsor smore making, I don't know.
Tiki torches.
What about those propane heaters? I don't think we want to restrict that, do we?
No, 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 no. And those are usually the, the caged sort of devices that have the heating elements inside. Yeah, I don't think we have to worry about that at this point in the time, but you're right. You're right.
Then Guru, Green Parrot has them now, just for heating purposes.
Great.
David, I have a question regarding some outside dining that they are putting up like wedding tents. Would that be permissible in, say, the parking lot of the shopping center?
Well, that raises a couple of questions, Alan.
I know.
First of all, this, the resolution would require them to demonstrate that they have maintained their parking requirements for the use. So if they're taking up parking spaces by you, by doing outdoor dining, they've got to show that there's additional parking that meets their parking requirements. Secondly, when you have car, some cars able to park in normal parking spaces, but they're immediately adjacent to or budding spaces used for outdoor dining or outdoor sales, then you've got to have some kind of physical separation, demarcation between parking and the outdoor use. And that's required by the resolution. The third item is, you know, tents are generally categorized as temporary structures. And, and usually you'd have to come in and get a permit for those. Micah, maybe you can.
It's anything over a certain square footage. So if it's a smaller tent, there's no permit required. But I, I was, that's one of the things that I was going to bring up is maybe we want to have any, any tent that they, they're proposing would be, would require a permit because there's inspections that are, that are associated with that, that so the thing doesn't blow away or fall over or catch fire if they're using those propane heaters or any of that stuff.
There's a tent up at the Good Know Ice Cream. I was just at the other day. Do they have a permit?
I, I don't believe so.
Okay. Is our code officer on, on the job or not?
No.
Who enforces that?
Me.
Okay, go get some ice cream.
Darn.
I have.
Might have to get down and dirty.
I have a question about the, the parking spots. I think we talked about this at other supervisor meetings in terms of if we're not passing a resolution for two weeks or whenever the heck it is, by then, perhaps the township is, and the, and the county is going to be in the green phase. I don't, for, let's just talk about the restaurants. How, does that mean that restaurants can have indoor dining, but at 50% capacity? In the green phase?
I believe that's what it means. I mean.
Is that green?
So then the required parking, like in Brixmore in the Village of Newtown, a shopping center is already very low number per table, whatever it is. Would that be now the requirement would be half of that, at that, in that phase?
Well, that, I guess it depends if they're doing outdoor dining as well, that could increase.
Yeah, if they're doing outdoor dining, I guess. Are you, if they have an indoor dining, well, it doesn't matter unless they're using parking spots for outdoor dining.
The Village of Newtown was based on, on the, the shopping center use. It wasn't, the parking is not allocated to each individual restaurant. So that's a little different animal than, say, just a, say, just a regular restaurant.
So if I, if I was Solstice, for example, just to use an example, and I had 50% indoor, and I have a patio in the back that can be used, and you got to have social distancing. And then I still want to do some outdoor. I mean, they have a sidewalk in front of, I don't recall, have a sidewalk in front. But maybe they want to use a few of their parking spots for some outdoor dining. I don't know why, but I'm just speculating. Would that mean that they are, they're encroaching on the parking that's allowed for the shopping center? I don't understand how that would work.
Well, it's possible, John. You know, again, we can get into a heavy duty analysis of the parking ratios allowed for Brixmore, and if certain spaces are used by outdoor dining establishments that removes those spaces, and where would other spaces come from? But A, I think the whole thing is generally temporary. And, and B, we're trying to help these businesses, you know, get, get back on their feet. I, I don't think anybody wants to take out the, the slide rule and, and sit there and say, well, I'm sorry. You can only use one quarter of one parking space because other than that, you're going to be disrupting the whole parking ratio of the shopping center. It's that kind of thing.
Dave, in regards to Brixmore, it's not the disrupting the parking ratio, but none, none of those establishments actually own or their parking spots out front of their buildings are reserved for them.
That's correct.
The parking calculation, somebody could park in front of Solstice and go down and eat at Iron Hill.
Correct.
So I mean, in that regard, they don't, those spots aren't really reserved for those particular restaurants. It's, it's on a, it's on a development whole basis.
Exactly.
So I can't, unless Brixmore themselves gave them permission to block up two or three parking spots, or how many they, they're asking for, they're still impinging upon the parking for Chipotle and for Iron Hill and for whatever, because all that is shared parking.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
Well, there's a.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. There is an outdoor area for tables in between the buildings over there. I don't know. That's between Chipotle and I forget the other one, the pizza place maybe. So there's already outdoor, and then you got the amphitheater, which I guess people can go and take their food, like takeout. But I had a couple of other questions. If I can. You state that this is a temporary 90 days. What if we need to extend this? I mean, this goes in the green phase and through whatever, 90 days is three months. I hope you don't have to extend it, but I guess we can extend it if we already pass it as a temporary.
Yes, exactly, John. We can, it just takes a simple motion to extend the resolution.
I have a question on page two, the number D, where it says, if a merchant proposes to use part of a sidewalk for outdoor sales of merchandise and their dining, the merchant sell less sufficient space for pedestrians and persons with disability to traverse the sidewalk while maintaining a minimum six foot distance between each person. What does each person mean? Does they can't oversee the distance between people walking past them? So it's not referring to pedestrian. It sounds like it's referring to the pedestrians, but.
Yeah, I, I think that my interpretation of what that means, John, is that if you're going to put a, a table, one or adjacent to a sidewalk with a chair at it, that chair would better be located at least six feet from where the nearest pedestrian could walk. So again, I, to me, I don't think any outdoor dining can take place on sidewalks because sidewalks are used for pedestrians and they're within the right of way. So they're going to have to do it on, on private property.
What this means is that, like, the Green Parrot can't have their tables up, out on the sidewalk as they currently do.
That may, it may mean that, yes.
Micah, can you address that?
If they're in the configuration they're currently in, it's fine. Dave, add something into this that, that specifically prohibits the occupancy of any right of way or, and add, add a specific in there that it needs, there needs to be five foot maintained, five foot, a five foot wide path needs to, clear path needs to be maintained on any sidewalk.
So a pedestrian should be not within six feet of whoever the local diner is sitting at that table. Is that what you're saying? According to what, what was just read. If I'm walking down in front of the Green Parrot, the person sitting at that table should be at least six feet away from me. Even though I'm walking, they should be six feet away from the nearest pedestrian.
Yeah.
I'm just asking for interpretation that, because that's, that's, that's what that, that basically says.
I don't think that works.
Yeah, I don't think that's a good idea.
To keep the tables and chairs away from the sidewalk?
No, to make, to make it so that a table or a chair can't be six feet within a pedestrian walking by. That's ridiculous.
But then.
The pedestrian could go on the other side of the street and walk if they.
Or, or have them walk in the street and get hit by a car. I mean, I don't, I don't know what is the right thing to do.
I think you've, I think you've got to keep the sidewalks clear. I, I, to me, look, the Green Parrot can, has a side and a rear. For them to put tables and chairs out on the sidewalk that runs along Sycamore Street in front of their building, pedestrians should not be required to confront a situation where they've got to get closer than six feet to people sitting, eating, cross the road, go down the other side and then cut back. That's absurd.
Well, the argument was made to me that, you know, it's, in, helping businesses get started is also a, a visible, has to be visible. And having people out on the streets, on the sidewalks dining gives a message that, you know, we're open for business, basically, and it adds a little bit to the ambience, maybe, for a time being. And also, I was told that there is a certain amount of feet in front of the building that is not public right of way as far as, I mean, I'm not an expert in all of this.
That's something that we can look at. I agree. If there's, if there's an area in front of the building that is outside, that not in the public right of way of Sycamore Street, then that should be able to be occupied. I think we're talking about the sidewalk itself and, and the ability of folks to walk down that sidewalk without hat, without encountering and having to avoid diners.
Encountering and avoiding and being six feet away from them are two different things.
I don't, I don't, not always, John.
I like, however we illustrate this in the ordinance, I think, in my opinion, a configuration like the parrot with the five feet wide sidewalk should be acceptable. I'm not sure which, I'm here two arguments. There needs to be five foot right of way for pedestrians and people with disabilities. Understandable, but I don't think you can say you need to be six feet from a diner. That's never going to happen. That's not going to work. I don't think anywhere.
I don't care if families sit around a, if families sit around a table and they've been quarantining altogether. I don't care if there's no distance between them.
No, no, no.
If I'm walking down the sidewalk and I come to other people sitting at a table on the sidewalk or very close to the sidewalk, I would like to stay, I would like to stay six feet away from them.
Well, that's your opinion, and I think it's up to the Board of Supervisors to really define this, you know. Thank you for writing this.
We're all looking at the Green Parrot, but right across the street, the Sycamore Grill, which also has some tables outside, have ample space, probably six feet, that a person can walk away from those tables. So you're talking about a place that has been configured for outside tables as a place that is putting outside tables out there and configuring it themselves. So I don't want to, I don't want to have, or the, the responsibility of a person having to walk into the street to avoid diners. Because then what's the legal aspect if they get hit by a car? And we're going to be on that long list of suits that these people, because we impinged upon a pedestrian safety. Now, we're not bothering the diner. We're just asking that there be a six foot buffer between that particular diner and the person. On the other side of the street, there is. There is.
This is an extraordinary situation that we're trying to address here, and we need to take some measures that are, you know, maybe some places are not built for it. But, you know, what's good for the chicken on the other side of the street should be good for the parrot too. So, you know.
The parrot was never, well, also the parrot has the convenience of their porch, which is open air space. No other restaurant has that. Guru has a deck, which they can take advantage of. LaStella Market has a porch. LaStella Restaurant has a back area. So some places were prepared for, well, they, they're not prepared for COVID, no, but they have been for dining outside. Even if you look at the dining area, the tables that are set up at Newtown Pizza, there is, there is ample space for pedestrians to ride, to, to walk by.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll argue it's probably not six feet, though, Phil.
The Green Parrot just happens to be a, an exception because their outside was not configured for tables to be on the street. Now, they're, they were configured for that nice porch that they have, but they weren't configured for, for eating outside.
So is the porch considered outside dining?
I think they're using it right now.
It is. The only reason it's a patio is because they weren't allowed the indoor square footage for parking. We made him, we made him declare it as a porch because.
It's a porch that they could be.
Not us.
Opened up for the summertime, but they could also close it as an indoor area in the wintertime, which gives them additional seating space in, in the winter. So the Green Parrot has somewhat.
They're ahead of the game.
A little bit of the best of both worlds there.
Seems like they're ahead of the game. And that porch is huge. I mean, that's, that's a big area that if, if it doesn't count toward indoor dining and, and they can use that now.
Have a sidewalk area on the side of the building, which is on Silo Drive, which a few tables can be put there, and that's not impinging upon anybody's walk.
That's a private.
If you're eating in the porch area and you're sitting near the, the sidewalk and somebody can walk by less than six feet from them.
That will be accurate.
I think it's sent back more than six feet from.
It's not. There's a flower bed. Yeah.
David, I have a question for you. The, the parking spaces on Sycamore Street that are immediately in front of the Good Know complex, are they controlled by the township or the state? Because you could probably create no parking in front of those businesses on that side of the street if it's a critical issue. I know that they're working supposedly at 50% capacity indoor and outdoor. The requirement for parking would be reduced, except for the retail spaces that probably are not going to be opening until this yellow period is passed. But just, just a thought, I didn't know if we have the opportunity to section off parking spaces.
Alan, you know that those, those parking spaces have been calculated into everyone on Sycamore Street's off-street parking. So those parking spaces have been calculated by the Sycamore Grill, by Green Parrot.
Exactly.
Way up. So, I mean, unless we could stack cars one on top of the other, those parking place, parking spaces have been configured and calculated into everyone's parking calculations. So for us to block anything off, there's, again, is a situation where we're blocking off in front of the Green Parrot and the Sycamore Street Grill is upset because some of their clientele could park in those spaces. So, you know.
I understand, Phil. I, I just was suggesting, since they're running at supposedly 50% of their capacity and the parking was based on 100% capacity, a reduction in number of parking spaces, you know, might be a possibility. I don't say it's ideal, but, you know, if, if it's such a critical issue for sidewalk dining, that would be one way to ensure that pedestrians have a place to walk. They walk in the sectioned off parking spaces. Again, just a thought on the top of my head.
Can I, can I make a comment here? It just seems, from what I'm, I've been hearing, the sidewalks are a challenge for safety, for six feet, six feet distance, but we also want to make sure that our, our, our businesses have the ability to have people walking in them and enjoying whatever products and services they offer, whether that be dining or clothing items, whatever. I made a suggestion maybe a few weeks ago about getting, having them do a special social permit or whatever it is, like, forgive me, I don't know the exact terminology, where we give them, those businesses, an opportunity where we close off the street for a period, oh, maybe, maybe Friday, Saturday, whatever it is. And we just have them put the tables, if possible, out on the street. And they can use that area and we block it off. And people can walk up and down the sidewalks without a problem, six feet apart, and everything is clear. And we don't have to worry about the dynamic of making sure people are six feet apart on sidewalks and so forth when they can police that themselves. I think that's, that, that would be probably a really easy solution because all those businesses just have to get together and submit a, an application or permit, right, request? And that might just solve all the issues that we have currently, or that we're discussing.
Well, that would be very hard to control. We might end up having a photo in the, in the paper how people are out on Sycamore Street. They're not socially distancing. They're not wearing their masks. And then you're going to have, I mean, you know, I.
I mean, John, we have, John, we have that now. Like, I mean, we had a protest in Newtown, right? You've got people doing marches. I mean, people have to be responsible for themselves with this pandemic. And I think everyone is well aware of what they need to protect themselves. What we are discussing here is how do we help our businesses, right? So I hear what you're saying, John, but, I mean, if someone's worried, worried, concerned about, you know, contracting, you know, COVID-19, I'm sure they're going to keep their distance or maybe not even show up or walk down that street. But that's just my thought because I think the sidewalk, I mean, I passed by this one. I ran past the Green Parrot. They may have, what, I don't know, four or five tables out there? That doesn't really move the needle, I don't think, for them in terms of having enough capacity and customers to help them in any way, shape or form. I think that the, the street would give them opportunity to do that, Sycamore and all the different businesses out there for people to walk in and use their, their services and their products and everything that they offer. So that's just my thought.
But one special day is not going to help them either.
Said weekends.
Wait, hold.
One weekend's not going to.
No, I didn't say, I didn't say just one weekend. Like, make it consecutive.
Can I just, let, I mean, we're, we're, we seem to be the ones that are trying to either solve this problem or impose other rules and regulations when we're not even the restaurant owners. My, my.
Business owners.
Well, my question is, has there been any complaints from the restaurant owners or business owners, unless, you know, maybe Mr. Robbins not selling enough diamonds or something like that? But have there been any complaints from these people in regards to not being able to serve their patrons properly? And the reason I'm, I'm saying is that, are we making a problem where there's no problem? Like, if the Green Parrot is okay with what they're doing and no one is complaining about it, should we be imposing any kind of additional restrictions? Same thing with any of the other businesses. What I'm saying is, is this self-governing among the businesses? I mean, have we had an influx of any complaints coming in, Micah, that people can't get by, pedestrians can't walk by, or anything like that? Because if there are no complaints, I always view it as you address it when the complaint comes in. And if there aren't any complaints, we're just, we're just making fodder for more complaints. You address it when the complaint comes in. And if there aren't any complaints, we're just, we're just making fodder for more complaints to be made. So maybe we just let, let the businesses govern themselves. In regards to what they're doing, as long as they're not breaking the law or, and if they do break the law. I believe that it's up to the state police to go out there and govern them, not, not us, because they're breaking state regulations. Is that, is that correct or am I misinformed on that?
Well, the state would enforce the liquor control violations. But, but other violations would be enforceable by the township.
Okay.
That's, I don't think that's what Bucks County said. Bucks County said that the, the state police were enforcing this.
Well, that's not, that, that's not what I heard.
Right, maybe we should.
Bucks County said a lot of things wrong recently and, you know, I wouldn't put much stock in, in what they have to say.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, because they really don't have, they really don't have mu- much control. This is, this is a state. Uh, governor and, and state legislature run, quote, emergency declaration. The county.
Well, this comes from.
County's got funds.
This comes from the district attorney's office who mentioned that the state police will be enforcing this.
Well, then nothing's going to get enforced, John, because there's not enough state police to do it. And guess what? Guess what? We, nobody around us is controlled by the state police. You're talking about rural townships and things that don't. Have their own police forces.
I think what it is, Dave, is that the state police would be called if there was a complaint in any regards, what, how the seating is. Uh, whatever. I think the state police are the ones that would be coming in. If I had a problem with XYZ place, I would call the state police because they're the ones that would be enforcing it. Because again, it's, it's under the, the auspices of the governor, which is the state of Pennsylvania.
Well.
Well, I thought that the state police, now we, we have more leniency in, 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 in how we can do things. Maybe we go out there and say, hey, you may, you might not want to do that, but not cite people. But the state police, from what I understand, is the, is the, uh, law enforcement organization that can enforce fines and so on.
And if that's the case, wonderful, but I gotta tell you, Phil. You call, you're a business owner or you're a resident who doesn't like what a business is doing, you call the state police and. 24 hours later, when they get back to you and or arrive on the scene, you can tell them all about it. It's, it's, it's ridiculous.
It's a matter of what our police will tell people if people come to them to complain. What do our police departments say? Do they say, okay, we're responsible. We gotta go out there and police this? Or do they say, please call this number for the state police?
Michael, what have you heard?
If there's any, if there's any violations of the. If we take an incident report and we pass it along to the, either the state police or. Bucks County, if they're, if they're the issuing agency, health department, any of that stuff, um, or liquor control board. The businesses that are. Opening that aren't supposed to be open, we'll talk to them. We'll go out and say, listen, you know, it's the governor's order, just so you know. You know, and that's really about the extent of it.
Okay, but my question is, our police department do not have to go out and enforce anything like this? Is that true?
They don't have to? No. This is a government, it's a governor's work.
Everybody's working together though, and to get any kind of response time at all. The local folks are gonna, are, are going to be called. You can call the state police all you want and you might see a state policeman the next day.
Well, I don't really care about that. What I care about is overtaxing our police department.
I don't think that's it. Mike, is that happening?
Not right now, no. We're not getting many complaints about anything right now.
I mean, let me, let me go back. I'm sorry, Dennis, go ahead.
He said, my, my understanding is was if a complaint, complaint come in, they do an incident report and pass it to the state police for enforcement.
Yeah.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Well then, let's go back to this, this ordinance itself. It sounds like, uh, our businesses are being self-policed. They are, if they are following the rules and regulations, that's great. If not, we may send somebody out there to just say, hey. It's not going this right way. My question is to the board, is this resolution necessary? If we have some sort of working arrangement already with the businesses on how things should operate. Are we, are we throwing something out there that doesn't need to be thrown out there?
Why don't we just eliminate some of the paragraphs in here that try to put limitations on it? And we can make it a statement that we support what local businesses are doing. As long as they, whatever, there's some wording in there about breaking higher authority law. You know, forget this thing about the sidewalk, forget about the parking spots. I don't know, a number of things in there that we can just eliminate. And show that we support, uh, local businesses and, you know, believe in, if you want to say self-policing or whatever. But they should still send an application for what they want to do because if it becomes egregious. Then maybe we want to take a closer look at it.
In, in the Montgomery County, Montgomery Township, uh, the part about the sidewalk. If a business uses a part of the sidewalk, the business shall allow sufficient space for pedestrians, handicapped individuals to traverse. The sidewalk.
Period, right?
Yeah. They did not go into like distances.
In, instead of a, uh, resolution, can we, can we formulate some sort of, uh, I don't know. A declaration of how to do business during COVID? And instead of all these whereas's and, and so on, just make particular bullet points. Of, of what we agree to and, and how things should be done. Is, is that. I, I think more of a show of support. Than this full-blown resolution that we have here.
Well, maybe we need input from local businesses and not make this a legalese document. And, uh, we, we are supposed to have this, uh, economic development committee. I thought that was supposed to be on our agenda. To talk about tonight.
Of course, too. I think the task force is, uh, something that, again, if this is businesses. Then the Newtown Business Association should be involved. And again, if we wait two, three, four weeks, it, it's a moot point. I mean, things will be operating maybe at 50 to 75%. So I mean, as we prolong this, you know, uh, what's, what's the purpose? To have a resolution or a declaration two months from now? I mean, hopefully, hopefully we don't have another COVID, uh, come back, but you know, we don't know.
I think you could edit this and, you know, like, uh, you know, take out a number of things. And you still have a resolution that kind of says we support what you're doing, you know, as long as it's safe. And as long as you give us a, an idea of what you're doing before you go ahead and do it. I know that Michael was, uh, you know, concerned when businesses go out there and just do whatever they damn well please. That that's not really something that we support either, but they at least have an application in and then we can. You know, have some idea of what's going on and that they know that they're working with the township and the township's working with them.
Dennis, how long that Montgomery, uh, resolution?
What about it?
Now, how, how long is, how many, how many points do they have to that?
They have six points.
So one, one page resolution, uh, broken down to one page then?
Yes, it's a page and a half and then signatures at the bottom of the second page. So it's front and back of one sheet of paper.
Why don't we have copies of that? I know we, we may have copies of, but why don't we circulate copies of that one again? Everybody take a look and we could discuss that at the next board meeting if everybody's okay with that one. Maybe that's the one we adopt, since it's not that intense, it seems like, as, as it may be.
Which one's that, Phil?
Uh, Montgomery, not Montgomery County, Montgomery.
Township.
Township, yeah.
Well, that, I, I mean, I, I took that one. It didn't even mention COVID. I, I thought it was somewhat poorly written. I didn't add a whole lot of onerous requirements for businesses that they have to meet. I just sort of. Tweaked it to, to have them show that they, where they wish to do the outdoor. Sales and dining is, uh, you know, within private property and. You know, they have enough parking, things that the Montgomery Township resolution already require. Not sure what, what, what direction we're getting.
Well, I think most of the criticism has to do with that paragraph D, alright?
Yeah, I agree. What's that?
Space, the six feet between people.
Move my cat. Okay.
I don't see anything much wrong with anything else, basically, uh, in this. Although maybe lengthy, I don't know what you added or didn't add, but, but.
Maybe you could tweak it more towards the Montgomery Township one. Without some of the extensive verbiage in it. Again, I'm just looking at that this is hopefully going to be a temporary thing that, you know.
90 days.
But I'm just saying in regards to, uh, COVID, unless we get a re, re, uh, a relapse of it. Then we'd have to, then we have to reconsider it altogether. So maybe, maybe it could be tweaked a little bit down to, down in size to what the Montgomery Township one says. And incorporate all the valid points, but like I said, I, I, I don't think we. Have to add on to it if we don't have to.
Well, I heard, I heard during today's discussion alone that we want to require that any tent. Uh, obtain a, a permit for a temporary structure. And that, um, the occupant, uh, that the business cannot occupy. Any right-of-way and shall maintain a five-foot wide, clear path on any sidewalk. And, and those I think are in addition to what we already state in there.
Well, we already have.
Hold on, John, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. I've gotten some add these provisions and now I'm getting some. Don't make it as complicated and complex.
I don't think anybody said to add the thing about the tent. We already have, uh, permits required for tents, so you don't have to rewrite that again. Probably the same thing for open flames. You know, you don't have to put all this stuff in here. You know, I, I, I didn't look over all the little details. I don't have a problem with most of the other stuff.
Montgomery Township, uh, ordinance or resolution on letter D, they just, they stop at sidewalk. In the very last line, they take out, they don't have the while maintaining the minimum six foot distance between each person.
That works for me.
That works for me. I mean, you know, you're putting obstacles in the way here. And people are talking about having, uh, uh, weekends with people walking around and let them take care of themselves. You know, it's not our business to, uh, to, uh, regulate the six feet between people. That's what I'm hearing. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Alright.
Phil, I have one more question. Um, in terms of when, if we go to green, the resolution is no longer valid. But what happens if in October.
Back.
COVID comes back. Can we re-establish this resolution or do you have to start all over again?
Too cold to eat outside.
Yeah, I guess we could re-establish.
We should have open flames.
And, uh, yeah. I mean, after 90 days, uh, we would have to reconsider if it's necessary or not. Or it could be a hun, going to 120 days and then something happens. Then we'd have to reconsider establishing a. I guess it would be a new ordinance or an adjustment to this ordinance that we're, we're talking about. Resolution, I'm sorry, not ordinance.
It remains in effect until it's, uh, dissolved or whatever the wording might be. Can't you do something like that?
Sure, it ends at nine, 90 days.
Sure. I mean, the 90-day thing came from Montgomery Township, so it sounded logical because that's, you know, the time, a, a, a. Tenable timeframe. I mean, if you want to say it stays in, any resolution stays in effect until it's repealed. So I don't even have to say anything. I can remove the 90-day reference.
I don't care. I think 90 days is fine. I, you know, we can remove it, whatever.
It makes us reconsider where we are.
Okay, everybody okay so far?
Yeah, the only, like I said, the only problem I have is the six-foot distance sentence that we take that out.
Have that stop at sidewalk and take out. In our reality, people should be practicing six-foot distance anyway amongst themselves. We can't follow them around through the whole township to make sure that, so that's a, uh, something that common sense would tell you. Now, if you drive through New Hope, that common sense doesn't happen. I did that.
Yeah, the sidewalks are about four feet there.
Oh, and, and no masks, nothing. I mean, these people were just, it was a Petri dish for COVID-19, but. That's, hey, you know, it's America. Where are you gonna go? Alright, I guess, uh, we, you have the direction, Dave, in regards. Let's move on to the real discussion now. And I'll, I'll, I'll turn that back over to Mr. Stand there to. And I guess Ms. Fountain's also here for her input on the.
Absolutely.
Uh, E30 ordinance.
Okay, um, to set the, set the base for this. A couple courts, uh, one in Bucks County and one in Montgomery County have ruled that zoning ordinances. That do not provide for the use, uh, that we have called, uh, convenience store. Slash gas station has one single use. If they, if you, if that zoning ordinance doesn't provide for that use, it is unconstitutional. And someone challenging that, which in, I believe both of those cases was Provco. Who, who wants to put a Wawa in both Plumstead and Hatboro and of course Newtown as well. They, they have won the first round of, of court cases. And when we, the joint shared municipalities looked at the joint municipal zoning ordinance. There is no use, there is no combined use. There's, uh, gas stations and there's, uh, retail stores or shops that a convenience center could fit in. But there's no use to combine them. So we decided that, uh, well, let me go chronologically. When the joint sure took any action. The, uh, Provco filed a substantive validity challenge to the, uh, constitutionality of the ordinance. Same thing they did in Plumstead and Hatboro. And so that faces us and we, we have that right now put on hold while we prepare an ordinance. Pursuant to a municipal curative amendment, which meant that all three municipalities declared that the. Joint Municipal Zoning Ordinance was unconstitutional based on the fact that it doesn't provide for this use. Uh, while we do that, Provco has agreed to put its substantive validity challenge on hold to see what comes out of that. We've had some staff meetings with Provco to take a look at what they would like to see. And we believe that the current draft of the ordinance that we have in front of us for review today. Gives them some of what they want, but not all of what they want. We're not rolling over for them and saying, sure, put in the biggest Wawa in the history of the world. Uh, up on Silver Lake Road, put in signs that are, uh, you know, 50 feet tall and lighting. Uh, that, that lights up the, uh, uh, that side of the township and all, all of the above. We, we are being judicious and somewhat reasonable in what we are looking to allow them to do. But it has to be more than what Upper Makefield and Wrightstown are proposing. For this use in their zoning districts, because they're not faced with a substantive validity challenge. Seeking to put a Wawa in either of their municipalities. So we've limited the use to being permitted in the OR district. Which is what the zoning is of the Provco site, as it were. And we have, uh, and Michelle can go into more detail as we go through the ordinance, but we have. Provided for minimum lot size. We've provided for minimum building footprint. We've provided for, uh, number of, uh, pumps and fueling stations. Canopy height, uh, lighting, landscaping, all of the above. In somewhere between where Upper Makefield and. in somewhere between where Upper Makefield and Wrightstown are and where Provco is. So that our goal is to avoid having to go to the zoning hearing board and fight a fight that has already been lost twice by two other municipalities, and spend, throw good money after bad, fight that fight, and then possibly have to spend money on appeals. I know if Provco loses before the zoning hearing board, they're going to appeal, and we've got to defend against that appeal. That'll go to Bucks County Court, it'll go to Commonwealth Court, and who knows, it may go to the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania. So the goal here is give a little to get a little, save the taxpayers the money that we would spend on that, and come up with a reasonable ordinance that would allow this use in the OR, but wouldn't allow it anywhere else in the, in Newtown. It would allow it in one zoning district, I think in Upper Makefield, and one zoning district in Wrightstown, where it would make sense, where the largest of their roads intersect, where the most traffic would come by, that would, that would be logical for them. And that's what's making its way through the Joint Sherb right now. Right now, the planning commissions, Upper Makefield, Wrightstown Planning Commission reviewed it and made recommendations to their Board of Supervisors. Our planning commission recently met and made some recommendations. But again, what goes back to the Joint Sherb, the Joint Zoning Council, which meets the first Thursday of every month, what goes back to them really should come from the supervisors. Because if you get comments that come from the planning commission that go back to the Joint Zoning Council, and the supervisors say, "Hold it, we don't necessarily agree with the planning commission's comments," then the Joint Zoning Council is getting two different messages from Newtown Township. So I think it behooves the supervisors to take its own planning commission's comments, decide which ones it likes and which ones it doesn't like, formulate comments, and return those comments to the Joint Zoning Council. So that's what we're here to do today. Michelle Fountain has put together a red line of an ordinance that we can go through. A lot of, some of the redlining shows that Newtown previously was allowing this use in not only the OR district, but also in the LI and the OLI zoning districts in Newtown. And staff recently decided that, you know, why give them more opportunity to locate here if giving them the ability to do so in the OR district covers us constitutionally and would avoid a successful challenge? So we took out all of the provisions that dealt with the OLI and LI districts after looking at the maps and seeing what properties might be susceptible to having a Wawa or Royal Farms or any other user sheets, whomever might want to come in, as this use. So with that, as an introduction, I guess we should open it up to questions, or do we want to go through the ordinance as written here and talk about some of the provisions that were requiring or providing for? How do you want to work that?
Yeah, let's, I guess, set the groundwork here is that this is kind of doing two things. And Michelle, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's kind of, because of our situation with Provco, kind of abiding a little bit to what they have proposed, but also protecting the township of, from what we're proposing. So it's almost that we're going into some sort of negotiation and trying to get the best win-win for both. So Provco doesn't go ahead and possibly take any more legal action against us, but we're also performing our due diligence for the township to protect it the best way possible. Is it, would that be it in a nutshell, or?
I would agree with that, and also add that we looked at it from a planning perspective, of course, also, and revised some of the dimensional requirements that made sense from a planning nature. One thing I'd like to add from what Dave said is that the ordinance that you have in front of you is the ordinance that went through the Wrightstown Planning Commission and their Board of Supervisors, and was reviewed at the Joint Zoning Council. So that's where we started as our base for your review today. And the comments from the Newtown Township Planning Commission have been added to this version.
Okay.
And also not to, not to perceive ourselves as heroes, but we're also protecting the other two townships with this ordinance so that they aren't challenged in any sort of way. If a Wawa or Sheetz or whoever comes to their township, this will give them more protection in this ordinance also, correct?
Right. We're currently, Phil, that's correct. We're currently in a period where the three Joint Sherb municipalities have declared a municipal curative amendment. There can't be any challenges based on the failure of the ordinance to provide for a gas station, convenience store, combined use until November. It was September, but then COVID came and added probably sixty days or so to our ability to finish the process. So that this ordinance has to come for a vote to the Joint Sherb municipalities. They're recommending that everybody get it done by, I think, the third week or last week of October, so that we have a, we don't have to push the envelope and we're not going to challenge, we're not going to come up against the time restrictions to get this ordinance enacted. And once the ordinance is enacted, those are the, are going to be the regulations that are in place. And if somebody wants to come in to Wrightstown at Anchor Crossing and put in a Wawa or Royal Farms, they have to live by whatever zoning district provisions there are, and they can't challenge the ordinance as unconstitutional for failing to provide for this use.
Quick question. On the document in our packet for today, remind me what the highlighted red is?
Okay, so the red and the blue are changes that were made by Wrightstown. Our changes for, from our planning commission and staff are in purple.
Dawn, I printed it out in black and white.
And I only have red.
I only have red, Michelle.
Yeah.
Look closely, there's, if you look very closely, Phil, like, for example, on, I'm looking at page seven, and you look at page seven, and it's got those paragraphs at the bottom, and it looks like it's all red, except in the very first line of paragraph three, it says, "There shall be no more than..." Six is crossed out, and four is written in, in purple.
Okay.
Does that show up in purple on yours? Three, three lines down, the twelve is crossed out, and it says eight. This was from our discussion the other night about, about, you know, how many pumps they can have.
But that, hold on, that goes against, I don't, that goes completely different than what I said. I don't know what happened from the version I sent to Micah. That, in my version, Dave, is blue and red, so that's versions that we did not do.
Does everybody else have all red? I have all red.
Yeah, I only see red.
Good.
I don't, I have, I have some purple.
I even checked, I even checked the version that I sent to you all to make sure it was that way.
I have, I definitely have purple, I have some blue, I have purple, blue, and red.
I apologize, everyone. I let you figure out the color coordination situation. I have to jump off of a call and get on to another meeting, so I'll catch up with Micah on all the details and look forward to hearing them. Thank you.
All right, David, thanks, David.
I'm only seeing green and blue. I mean, these documents need to be better indicated in the head what version it is or something like that. So we all know we're looking at the same thing.
How many, can we walk through it, and how, could you tell us that it's supposed to be purple?
Sure, 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 sure.
Good.
Absolutely.
Why don't we do that?
I, let me, let me address Mr. Mack first. I don't know what, how you want it to be better defined. If we said we started from the Wrightstown Township ordinance, and these are our revisions.
Well, all I'm saying is that each document should stand along with its own, you know, code or something to indicate the date that it was published, that's all. And it doesn't have any date on it whatsoever. So, you know, I don't know if I'm looking at the same thing, but in any case, can I make just one little minor thing here, comment?
Of course, of course.
You know, I think before we get down to nitty-gritty, I think there should be some definitions, like, especially what a fuel dispenser is. You know, I'm getting, I'm pretty confused about that. And then I noticed on page two, maybe this is not in other people's document, because I may not be looking at the right one, but under page two, under J, at the top of the page, "Motor vehicle fueling and convenience stores, blah, 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 provided that E30 use shall be permitted only on properties fronting on Taylorsville Road or Pennsylvania Route 532." Is that correct? Is that what's on this document?
What page, John?
Page two.
Page two?
Well, just.
Page two does not have a J.
It's a J. I have a J.
Yeah, I see one. Actually, page one has a J for me.
One, bottom of page one has a J.
Yeah, okay.
It starts off with motor vehicle fueling and convenience.
Yeah, I can see that.
And it says, "Shall be permitted only on properties fronting on Taylorsville Road or Pennsylvania Route 532." And somewhere else in a footnote for to a table on page three, to have a footnote somewhere else, it says, somewhere else in a document, it mentions VC1 and VC2, you know, it's, it's kind of productive. I mean, it's, it's.
John, the VC1 requirements, John.
John, the requirement about fronting on Taylorsville Road of Pennsylvania Route 532, if you look at the section that that amends, section 600A3, that's only the VC1 district. It's only in Wrights, it's only in Wrightstown. So it doesn't apply to property in Newtown.
That's correct.
We're in a Joint Sherb, we have to amend the entire ordinance, and there's going to be many provisions in here that only apply to VC1 in Wrightstown, and whatever the, whatever the one in Upper Makefield is.
Okay, my bad, my bad.
Okay.
Can we just have a definition, like a few, whatever that is?
Okay, we'll get to that in the ordinance a little bit later, if you want me to go through each section, so then maybe we'll pick that up then. So I believe the first revisions are on page two, and that is removing sections four and section five. And that is, as Dave said, that we're taking out this use in the LI and OLI district, okay?
Michelle, may I, son?
Of course.
In line with that, the third whereas on page one still has LI and OLI in it. You want to take it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'll be quiet.
No, please don't. Those are things we need to know, to make it.
Where's that, Michelle?
It's on page one. Page one, third whereas.
Okay, good, perfect.
Okay, moving on to page three. These are the dimensional requirements in the OR district. In that, you will see in the last row of the table for use E30, we are revising the minimum lot area from two acres to four acres. And we're adding a footnote where we're saying that the minimum lot area must be four acres for one to six fuel dispensers. But for every additional fuel dispenser, an additional one-half acre is required.
Just strike the S from the end of that acre, acres, in the footnote. Should be one-half acre, yeah.
Thank you.
Do the VC1 and VC2 areas that are included, are vague, at least four acres?
They are two acres. You will, if we go to the next, excuse me, one acre. If you go to the next page, Dawn, on page four and page five, they have the minimum lot areas in their tables. The minimum lot area in VC1 is one acre. And on page five, in the VC2, it is listed at forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, which is one acre.
So in those, they can't have any fuel dispensers at all?
I don't know what you mean by that.
Well, how many fuel dispensers are allowed in one acre versus forty-three thousand square feet?
The footnote that I read to you is only in the OR district. Later in the ordinance, we talk about the number of fuel dispensers. In the VC1 and the VC2, it is four for eight, which is how Dave, I think, refers to it. Four dispensers for a maximum of eight vehicles, four for eight.
So that's the same as in a, in the four acre, well, wait, the four acre.
Now, John, you've got to remember, these are the dimensional requirements for each different zoning district.
Right, for each zoning district, just in the OR, we're allowing a minimum lot area of four acres. OR district only in Newtown.
And then for?
That's the minimum lot area. And in the minimum lot area, you have a maximum of six dispensers, twelve vehicles. If you have another acre that's available in that district, you could have eight dispensers, maximum sixteen vehicles.
And, um, just for reference, the original Provco plan, how many acres was that?
If 5.09 was listed on their sketch plan, and remember, it was a sketch plan, 5.09 acres as a bayside area.
So in that location, according to their plan, if they go ahead with that, they would be able to have eight fuel dispensers?
Correct, correct, if that area is correct.
Why don't we, why do we say for every additional fuel dispenser, only an additional one-half acre is required? Why don't you say one acre is required?
We could, if that's what the board wants to do.
What would that do?
That would allow, go ahead, John.
Fewer pumps.
I'm just going by some of the suggestions we got from the planning commission. I mean, I think what the planning commission is, should be doing is giving suggestions to the board when we come around to finally deciding what to do with this. That's what the planning commission should be, and they shouldn't be approving this, for example, but. I remember, can I finish? In their discussions, they were talking about the number of fuel dispensers and limiting that. And so, you know, I would go along with that kind of recommendation that we need to do that.
And I wouldn't go along with it because they're comparing it to smaller-sized gas stations. They're comparing it to a Burns, they're comparing it to a Luke Oil. Now, I don't know, maybe none of you have ever been to a substantially sized Wawa. But if you only have it for four cars, six cars, where you're going to be, then you're going to have an overflow into lower Silver Lake Road and a backup of traffic. What they're proposing is what is, is substantial for a reasonably-sized Wawa. What the planning commission is saying is, oh, this should be comparable to Burns. There is no comparison. You're not comparing apples to apples. So in essence, and no offense, Alan, what the, what the planning commission is giving us is an archaic model. It's not a progressive model. So if you want to have that, have complaints of traffic backup because now there's not enough pumps on this Wawa or Sheetz or whatever you want to call it, then yeah, cut down the pumps. And then, I don't know, I don't know, Dave, is there some sort of, some sort of legal action they could take in regards to us cutting down the pumps of not being reasonable to what the size of the property is?
They could ask for a variance, that's what the.
Look, they can ask for, John.
The planning commission is not giving you, they should be comparing it to a Wawa that's in Wrightstown, that's in, not Wrightstown, that's in Richborough, that's in other places, not comparing it to a small mom-and-pop gas station, which doesn't even have a convenience store attached to it. which doesn't even have a convenience store attached to it. The only one that really does is Luke Oil. And that's not a comparison to.
I don't think the Wawa in Richborough has eight fueling stations. I think it has six. I don't know.
No, it hasn't.
Whatever.
There's the four aisles of two.
I don't care what the other municipalities are doing. I'm okay with cutting down the pumps.
Well, I do care what the other municipalities are doing, and I care that we're going to be like a bumble in regards to development of, of, it's on the holy ground of the bypass, which it's not. Oh, it's going to be a street road or a, uh, what is it, second street pipe, which it can't be because there's no curb cuts off of 413. Everything has to go. Oh, and there's no business. The largest business in Newtown sits on the bypass, which is the NAC.
Well, they built a bypass along it.
This is ridiculous. I mean, I don't understand the thought pattern. Maybe, maybe we just got to get a little bit modernized here because Newtown, no matter what everybody says, is not the country.
What's mad about Wawa? Why don't we put a Sonic in there? I like their hamburgers.
Move down to Wrightstown, Upper Makefield. Newtown was made to be the business center of the jointure. That was our intent.
Well, we are, and we're suffering with the businesses that are suffering, and I don't think.
Well, if we didn't have them, if we didn't have them, if we didn't have them, if it wasn't established, Newtown, we wouldn't be living here. Every one of us lives on a farm that was developed, and that's why people are here. If Newtown wasn't developed for density, you wouldn't have anything. There would be nothing here. It'd just be a bunch of, a bunch of farmers with horses running through. Let's get, let's, come on, come on, let's be realistic here. I don't, I don't understand what, what your people are trying to say, but.
I'm just saying less pumps is okay by me. I don't.
Well, okay.
I don't have to give them everything they want, or even half.
We're not giving them everything they want. That's the whole thing. We are trying to negotiate down to a lesser type of Wawa. If we did give them everything they want, they'd have eight pumps with 16 cars. We're not doing that. Uh, maybe I'm hearing different.
Yeah, because they got one additional acre already, so we are giving them eight pumps with 16. We're allowing for that. Can you tell me what we're not giving them that originally?
All you got to do is, in this, on this board, is count to three. Once you get those three votes, I don't care, do what you want. If you do it, we get sued, that's fine. Dave makes more money by representing us. Everything is fine.
I don't, I don't want to go there.
We have to, we have to give some. You can't say, let's do what Upper Makefield and Wrightstown are doing with regard to minimum lot size, number of pumps, all this stuff, building square footage, and let Provco get variances. It's not going to settle the substantive validity challenge. We've got to do a little bit more than that. We've got to help, we've got to give them some stuff. I'm not saying give them everything where they don't need any variances at all. Like, let them file a plan and tailor our zoning ordinance to it and meet everything, but.
Give me an example.
We've got to provide for, we've got to provide for more pumps than Wright, than Wrightstown and Upper Makefield.
Fine, fine, but give me an example of what they asked for that we're not giving them in this document.
Okay, I think they asked, didn't they ask for eight for 16, Michelle?
And we're giving them that.
They, they asked them eight, eight pumps for 16 fueling stations, and we're giving them, what, six for 12?
Yes.
We're giving them eight because they're talking about, we're talking about a five acre plot there that they originally proposed, which they will do again, and then they can have eight, just like they wanted, so that doesn't count.
Okay.
All right, but, John, we don't know whether or not they can meet that minimum lot area, five acres. Again, it's shown, it's shown on a sketch plan, but we still have to verify that there's no environmental restrictions or right-of-way included within that lot area.
John, that may be a gross lot area. That may be a gross lot area, not a net lot area.
All right, forget that. What else are we not giving them that they originally asked for?
The setbacks, the setbacks they asked for were from the cartway, not the right-of-way. So we, you shook your head. I don't understand. Did you?
I don't understand that. I mean, it's above my pay grade. You got to explain what that all is.
Okay, thank you. I'd be happy to. So the cartway is the paved surface of the roadway. It's the part you actually drive on. They wanted the setbacks to be from that cartway, from the road surface. Every other district within the jointure, in every other ordinance, municipal ordinance that I'm aware of, it is from the ultimate right-of-way area, which is the additional area besides the cartway, where usually utilities are put, where sidewalks are put. So it means that they have to push their buildings, their canopies further back.
And that would affect the bayside area as well.
Yes, it would. Yes, it was. And again, this was just a sketch plan. We didn't have the deed. We can't verify that their area that they show on here is correct.
And what else?
But it might be.
What about anything else?
Um, they.
Size of the building.
That's correct, the minimum size of the building. They have asked it to be 5,585 square feet. We, in this ordinance, are saying the maximum size could be 4,000 square feet. That's a little bit later. We'll get to that. They have asked for variant, not variant, they have asked for the ordinance to include exclusions with your sign ordinance. We did not put that in this ordinance. We're making, for example, all signs not to be within 1,000 feet facing the bypass. That's another item. There were things about buffering. They wanted less strict landscaping and buffering, which we did not include within this ordinance.
Michelle, also, I think we had some, we're language in there about hours of operation and capacity for eating, tables and chairs for eating there, which we didn't want.
So we limit the hours of operation. It's not 24-hour operation in this document?
I don't know.
No, we did not. No, it is allowed to be 24 hours in this document.
Okay, is it allowed to sell alcohol?
It'd have to be licensed by the liquor control board. It's a separate, if, if Wawa wanted to apply to the liquor control board for a liquor license to sell beer or wine out of the Wawa, we have no control, no jurisdiction or control over that. Local zoning can't say you can and you can't unless we become a dry municipality, which I don't think we're contemplating.
In section 11, though, it does say the following accessory uses for sale following items shall not be permitted. And then one of the things is the sale of alcoholic beverages.
Look, we're going to put our best foot forward.
Okay, and what, what is in this?
We're going to try to, we're going to try to limit, we're going to try to limit it.
Okay, what is in this that we would like to see that Wawa didn't originally propose? For example, the electric fueling stations. Is there anything else like that?
Well, we could go through the entire ordinance, but one thing is the minimum lot area that we were just talking about. They wanted it to be five acres. We said that it's four acres. That's one thing. The, I, I think the, Dave was talking about this ordinance being something to kind of protect the township, which it is. But I think I also, not I think, I do want to stress that this ordinance was also made as a, a good planning document. What we felt would fit within Newtown Township, knowing that we had to include this use. I don't know if I answered your question, John, but let me know what.
I mean, I'm just looking for, I'm just looking for other benefits that some people might like to see in a convenience store, gas station. You know, like the electric fueling stations. I don't know, the.
What, like amenities?
Yeah.
Amenities?
We added, we added all those provisions about additional landscaping, lighting requirements, we added in there.
And the facade, what it should look like, or, you know, I know we did something like that with Wendy's. That's before my time, but, you know, I don't know, I mean, I don't want to read this whole thing right now, but I'm just, you guys have been working on this a lot. You should know. Was there anything about the facade in there that just benefits Newtown?
Yeah, I remember some, maybe something about facades.
Yeah, we had that the, the canopy supports had to have a stone or other architectural amenity up to eight feet in height from the ground level.
I think they originally wanted six, Michelle, on that, and we required.
They didn't have anything. They didn't have anything in it. We first had six and then increased it to eight.
Yeah.
Amenities, we talked about lighting and went into detail with this, with the lighting. We increased the requirements for an environmental impact statement. That's now required, traffic impact study required, that it cannot be placed adjacent to an existing residential use.
Now, I think we also mentioned something about the type of canopy. Is, can you review what that is in this ordinance? I mean, there's a slanted canopy, you know, a roof canopy. Which, which one do we want? Which one is in here?
We say canopy shall have peaked roofs or roofs designed as not to appear as one plant.
Okay, so it makes it look a little bit nicer, maybe? I don't know.
Well. Go ahead.
We will move.
And there was something mentioned about no outdoor music speakers or whatever at the fueling stations. Is that still in there?
Yes.
Might note, the, the canopy size has been reduced. That's in number 11C.
You mean like the height, Dennis, or something like that?
60 feet in length, 60 feet in length.
Yep, the shown maximum committed size of 3,000.
3,000 square feet.
And we don't allow electronic signage? Is that correct?
The signage has to comply with the existing sign ordinance.
Yes.
I'm sorry, and the signage cannot be within the canopy.
Are there any other important differences, similarities? I mean, I don't know if we have to go through this whole document right now. It's kind of tedious, but.
Well, but, but unfortunately, or unfortunately, whether you want to go through it or not, we've got to come to some consensus because we've got to say this form of the ordinance is acceptable to Newtown to at least move to the Joint Zoning Council for their continued review.
Well, I thought the next step was, you know, everybody, the supervisors either vote yea or nay at some meeting. We have a couple of public meetings where the public can participate.
I mean, at this point, if you wanted, again, it's, we've got to, we've got to get to an ordinance that is in close to final form that we're going to recommend to be advertised and considered for enactment by each of the three townships at their own, at individual public hearings. Public hearings, any zoning ordinance amendment has to be held, perhaps has to be considered pursuant to a public hearing. It's advertised twice in the newspaper instead of once, and you've got to have a formal public hearing. You've got to open a hearing, and you've got to say, here's the ordinance, and you've got to give people the ability to speak to it. And then you close the hearing and you take action if you want to. You know, the, the planning commission is doing the legwork on reviewing this ordinance as it's passing through Newtown. The board just has to get some final comments together. Do we want to see anything changed in this particular version of the ordinance before it goes back to the Joint Zoning Council saying, we're good with this ordinance as it currently reads?
Well, I don't know. I mean, the only thing I would have change is the, the number of pumps requirement. Basically, for every additional fuel dispenser, an additional one acre is required. But that's just my opinion.
Well, that's.
Is there consensus? Yeah. Is there consensus from the board?
I guess I could compromise there.
Michelle, I, I think it's important to point out that the planning commission took the initial position that we wanted to be fair to the arcade gas stations and proximity and, and the impact on that. Understanding that where we are today is a lot different than when we started its review process as planners. My question for you is, I think we understand we need a compromise. I don't want to give them anything more than we have to, to get out of litigation. My question that I'm getting to is the canopy size, does that permit the configuration of six pumps with 12 hoses to be two in an island, two in an island, and two in a third island? Would that all fit within that reduction of square footage for a canopy?
You're asking me if the canopy size is large enough to fit a two-by-three configuration? Is that what you're asking me?
A three-two-by-two configuration, so that they aren't stacked three dispensers in a row. There's two dispensers in a row, a center line with two dispensers in a row, and a third line, so that you don't have people trying to negotiate into a vacant pump if the two end pumps are in use. Just from a planning perspective, I didn't know if canopy size would permit that flexibility in configuration.
That's a good question. We'll look into that.
Okay.
Because we did reduce that canopy size, so.
Yeah, and I'd like to see less than 16 dispensing units. I think 12 would be sufficient for the area that is going to wind up being the net buildable footprint of the Wawa proposal, so.
And please put in that definition, so we're absolutely clear about what we mean by a fuel dispenser. And multi, then, I've heard multi-pumped dispenser, fuel dispenser, hoses.
Yep.
TMI. If you're going to have all that information, I'd like the definition.
John, could you go to page seven, and you don't have to do it right now? Page seven, item number, in section 11, item number three, and read that paragraph and tell me if that is enough of a description of what we're trying to get across. You don't have to do it now.
All right, that, number three is in my, in page six for me.
Yeah.
Fueling positions, dispenser.
John, the big, the big section number, section 11. If you can find the beginning of section 11, I'll lead you to what we're talking about here.
Page seven.
Yeah, but it may not be on John's page seven. It may not be on John's page seven.
What, John?
11 says canopy shall be constructed over pump islands. Is that what you're talking about?
No, before that, before that.
No, before that.
That's number 11. Go to number three in that section.
There's a broader section 11, John.
No, he's in, he's in section 11.
I know he is.
He's on number 11. Just go to number three.
Right, number three begins in the VC1.
Yes.
Now, if you read halfway down, John, it starts in the OR zoning district. There shall be no more than six fuel dispensers with two fueling positions, et cetera. Michelle is asking you to read that and, and tell her if that's clear.
I'm asking, I'm asking for just someplace else in this thing. What the hell is a fuel dispenser? What is a fueling position? What do you mean by this? You know, maybe that's clear to everybody else, but we've had discussions about this. And then somebody else threw in something like multi, multi pumping station. So when Wawa comes to us and starts talking in a different language, you know, I want to make sure we're all talking about the same thing.
Okay, that's a good idea. Yeah, good idea. I know in the Wrightstown ordinance, they talked about pumps, but pumps at a gas station are below ground. So that's why I wanted to get rid of pumps.
All right.
So did we have consensus at all, Dave, or anybody else, about the number of fuel dispensers?
I don't like the number going up.
What's that, Kyle?
I don't like the number at a maximum of eight later on in that same paragraph.
Two additional fuel dispensers shall be allowed for a maximum of eight fuel dispensers if the minimum lot area is achieved. That comes from the chart, back in the OR district chart.
Right.
Earlier in the ordinance. We, we wanted to be a little, if we go back to them and say, you can't have more than six pumps for twelve fueling, twelve fueling stations. We anticipate a hue and cry and that's, you know, not going to work, but we didn't want to go as.
We said if there's an additional acre, you can have an additional.
Right.
Fuel dispenser. That's seven.
Can we raise it to an acre instead of a half an acre? I mean, that, that would prevent more pumps. I mean, if you could have one per half acre, you can certainly have more than one per acre.
No.
Additional per acre.
I would prefer to have one per additional acre, so.
Right, I understand. That's what, that's what I'm echoing what you're saying and trying to explain it. Yeah.
Okay. Well, so then you can have up to seven if you have five acres.
Right, and I don't know if they do them on odd numbers.
What's wrong with odd numbers? That's like being left-handed? We don't accept that?
No, nope. There, I mean.
They're going to roof and their canopy design, probably.
Going to be six for twelve or eight for sixteen. It's not, there's no.
Talking about a multi-billion dollar company, they can't design a canopy to go over seven versus eight.
Six for twelve with the convenience, still convenience fueling. That's where, that's where.
Six, six for twelve with the allowance if you have additional area, Kyle, or no?
I'm torn, man. I gotta be honest with you. I don't like giving them additional, but.
I agree with Kyle, but I don't know how to word it, but, you know.
We don't have to give them ten acres so they can have fifteen pumps or twelve pumps or.
No, it's a maximum of eight dispensers.
I'm just saying, we're defining our zoning. We'll tell them what convenience and fueling is. And I say, make it less. That's all.
I agree with Kyle.
Dennis, Phil?
Yeah, we have to put something in today, right?
Dave, I don't think we have to put something in today, Dave, do we?
I mean, sooner than later.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if we are changing this to they can get an extra fueling. I don't even know how we're going to do it, per acre. Again, they may qualify for an odd number of, of fueling stations.
It's not our problem.
I don't disagree with that, John.
I mean, you guys put in the additional acre baloney, so I'm just going with that. You can leave that whole thing out.
Well, we have the board's feedback on that, Michelle. I, I think, I think at least there's consensus that instead of referencing the half acre that we do back in the footnote in the chart on page.
Right, that, three.
Our, our page three, I know it could be someone else's page, whatever, that we say acre for each additional fuel dispenser, an additional one acre is required.
Yep, okay.
One, one acre of minimum lot size or whatever the acre is, is describing.
That, that seems like an incentive for them to build a bigger giant ass gas station. And I'd rather not give an incentive for them to buy more land and put more pumps in.
Well, the property that they're, the property that they're applying for is five acres gross, and we don't know how many, you know, again, I don't think we, we're trying to limit the building footprint.
I was just going to say for Matt, and we say in there, Kyle, for a maximum of eight dispensers. So they would need, with this change, they would need six acres, anything of six, to put in eight dispensers. And that's the most they could have.
Gotcha. I still don't like giving incentive to make it bigger. That's my opinion.
Okay. I know Mr. Mack kind of went through the whole thing and said that you didn't want to go through line, item by line item. I don't know if anybody else wants to discuss anything else. I have one change I'd like to make on page seven, again, in section eleven. And that is just to clear up the types of roads. In number one, we say use E thirty shall be permitted only on properties located at the intersection of two public streets. One street shall be an expressway, arterial, or major arterial. That word, that second, arterial should be collector.
What should it read, Michelle?
It should say be an expressway, arterial, or major collector.
Collector. Is this word street stay? The word street stays, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good.
I'm looking at Mr. Mack again. He looks like he has a question.
Well, again, everybody who is in planning knows all what these things mean. I, I don't know all the definitions. I mean, there could be just a little section where you add some definitions. It shouldn't be a big.
It's already in there.
We already reference, we reference appendix D of the JMZO, which is where those definitions are. We can't redefine them in this ordinance.
Right.
All right.
It's a pending classification.
Right.
Fuel dispenser is a separate issue, right? Okay.
Yes, yes.
Correct.
I had a question. And maybe it's, maybe it's for Alan and the planning commission, you and Jerry as well, about the, what was the, what was the final recommendation around hours of operation?
Dennis, I don't really think that we had taken a position on hours of recommendation or operation, other than we thought that it should be decided case by case and ultimately by the board of supervisors if twenty-four hours operation are the ultimate goal of the applicant. Planning commission discussed the impact on a twenty-four hour open. And I think it was our position initially that would be from twelve AM to five AM should be a closed position of that, that station. I don't know if Wawa would accept that or whether the board of supervisors would consider case by case and say, no, it's a twenty-four seven.
Yes, that's what you specified, at least consensus wise, at your January seventh meeting, that the hours of operations should be limited to eighteen hours a day. And there's also some requirement you had in there about sidewalks and trail, yes.
Well, that, that's why we're here, to see if the board of supervisors necessarily agrees with the, the planning commission on those. I know that, I know that Provco will balk at anything other than twenty-four hours. They'll balk at it, but again, I'm not saying that that, as John said, that's their problem. But again, we've got to negotiate. It's, it's a give and take and.
Well, you know, it's a thing about the police, you know, I don't think they've weighed in on this in terms of twenty-four hour operation way out there that, you know, has to be police twenty-four hours, maybe. I don't know.
Has, has the chief weighed in?
No, there's other thing, I mean, we spoke about it and he said there's other, the seven elevens twenty-four hours. And there's several businesses that are in the commons that are twenty-four hours.
And you see the problem is with the seven eleven.
What's that?
There are problems with the seven eleven in terms of drug problems and other things I've heard about. And I know there are some arrests made there, you know, so it has required policing.
John, one of the things the planning commission did speak about with that twenty-four hours operation, with the removal of indoor eating and tables and things outside the footprint of the building. We thought that there would be less potential to be a hangout or a meeting place for people other than purchasing legitimate goods and fuel. But that was just one of the thoughts. The other thing that I thought was important that we, we recently added and Michelle included is strengthening the environmental impact statement. The fact that this, this particular OR district is very close to Core Creek, the waterways of the Commonwealth. Some of the properties are also served by their own wells. So I think enhancing the requirement of an applicant to demonstrate that they do not put the waterways of the Commonwealth at risk or contaminate people that are on their own private wells is an extra additional hoop the applicant will have to go through. And I imagine an environmental impact assessment is not an inexpensive part of the process for them. So I think it gives a township a little more protection and it demonstrates to, you know, our residents that we, we're trying to do this in a responsible way. And I think protecting the environment is a win for everybody.
That's good. And speaking of hoops or impact, what about the traffic impact? I know they submitted a traffic study that said that would cause that intersection over there to soon to be degraded to a certain degree and almost be like an urban, acceptable to an urban environment. But would, is that something mentioned in this about traffic impact?
Yes, we say that a traffic impact study has to be submitted with the original application, land development application, with the original land development application, yes. And to get back to the hours of operation in number thirty, and again, section eleven, we say that the board of supervisors may limit the hours of operation if a residential use is located within seven hundred and fifty feet of the subject property line.
Of the property line, seven hundred and fifty feet. I don't know, isn't there the church, is that?
That's not a residential use.
Not residential.
So that would be within seven hundred and fifty feet, right?
The church would be, but it's not a residential use.
But there's a resident up the block, up the street from there who's already suing us.
Come again?
I'm not aware.
Isn't there some residential area, I don't know what it is, north, south of the church?
Up the way down by the Luxembourg office complex, isn't it?
It's Middletown town.
Before you get there, though, is that Middletown?
Well, we're on the border of Middletown.
Oh, it is.
Right.
That, that's.
It's very, it's very close to Middletown.
More than seven hundred and fifty feet, I think.
It's more than seven hundred and fifty feet?
I think so, yeah. I don't know, I can measure it, so I don't know. Dave, let me ask you a question. The board can deny this altogether, correct? Yes or no?
When you say deny this.
Deny, deny the Wawa from going into that piece of property.
Well, that becomes, that becomes the subject of substantive validity challenge.
I'm just asking you, yes or no, the board can deny this, correct?
Sure.
What happens if the board denies this?
Well, first of all, let me say, there's, there's nothing before the board right now to deny or not deny.
I'm just throwing it out there, being devil's advocate here, if the board were to deny this.
Right.
And stand up to the evil Wawa.
The, there will be, there will be hearings commenced before the zoning hearing board on Wawa's, on Provco's, let's say Provco's substantive validity challenge. The question being, does the joint municipal zoning ordinance exclude a combination gas station, convenience store use, which unfortunately for us has been determined in at least two other municipalities? And if the zoning hearing board makes a decision, whatever the zoning hearing board's decision is, if the township is going to, if the township loses and Provco wins at the zoning hearing board, township would have to decide whether to appeal.
Wait, let me clarify, let me clarify Phil's question. He's talking about, say we pass this, we make this curative amendment, and he was asking, we could still refuse to allow it, but Wawa to build it, but we can't because this gives, doesn't give the board of supervisors the power to approve or disapprove of applications. Is that correct?
This amendment provides for a new use that doesn't currently exist in the zoning ordinance.
But it's a.
With restrictions that govern it.
It's not a conditional use. It's what do you call it?
Special exception.
Which is something that we do not make a decision on, correct?
Correct, but you can take, you can, you have party status to that. If we pass this ordinance, Provco comes in, files for a special exception for a, an E thirty use, that goes to the zoning hearing board. The township can oppose that application if it wishes.
Right, and have we ever opposed an application and won like that?
Phil, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the Rock, Rockbridge development?
Well, in any case, it's not a decision for the board of supervisors to approve or disapprove an application. It's the zoning hearing board.
The initial application, but then Provco's got to file a land development plan. And that's before the board of supervisors.
And that's only like, do this maybe, do that. We can't require them to, to do what we ask them to do.
You can require them to meet all applicable ordinance requirements. You don't have to grant waivers from the subdivision and land development ordinance.
Okay, so if they don't plant native trees, we're just, you know, something like that?
Correct.
So that's.
That kind, that kind of thing. You know, a lot of that Saldo stuff has to do with sewer, sewers and landscaping and road access and design and things like that.
But this is, well, all right, fine. So that's how we can modify a little bit anyway. Ask for something.
But we can deny it.
You could deny a land development plan.
We did deny the, the rock ledge, and we won because there was, it was detrimental to the builder because they were sitting close to the Newtown Creek. And by developing in the Newtown Creek would have caused the water table to be adjusted and basically houses to be flooding. So in essence, we did win. And what I'm saying is, I'm not saying we're going to deny this, or, you know, if, if we do, we do. But if we were to find some sort of environmental hazard that could be caused by the Wawa putting in tanks underneath the ground, like Alan said, it could be an environmental hazard, we can deny them. And, and in some cases, in environmental. And, and in some cases, in environmental reasoning, we might be able to win against them. But that, I'm just, again, this is just speculation.
It's just good to, it's good to know.
Yeah, never say we can't deny, we can deny, it depends on what legal action is taken against us, that's all.
Exactly, so, but it's good to know what we can and cannot do, you know, after this is approved. So, you know, I think if you make some of these minor changes that we were talking about, it could go on to the other boards or back to the JMZO or whatever, JZC.
Okay. Michelle, you take some notes and have some of those changes. You good?
Seems to me we boiled it down to a couple of two, three issues.
Yes, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dennis. And I'm assuming everything that we did not discuss today, everyone is okay with? The other changes we made?
I've discussed all the major things that I was interested in discussing, so, yeah.
Okay. And let me go back to the beginning, please, and apologize. I, I misspoke at the beginning about the colors. The red is what we did. The purple and blue is Wrightstown.
Wrightstown's planning commission, yeah, that's correct.
Yes, hopefully.
I'll try to find, I'll try to find that version somewhere.
I don't have it, yeah.
It's in Michelle's most recent email attaching the ordinance.
Okay.
Yes, and from here on out.
What's happening is I think that Google is, is changing the color of the purple and the blue to red.
Really?
Yeah.
It didn't change mine, but we know that red and blue do make purple, so.
Just throw that out there.
And from here on out, Dave and I are going to put a date on the bottom of, of these ordinances.
Thanks.
Mike, any public comment come across?
No, there was no public comment.
Any old business to discuss?
We're not, we're not discussing anything about the economic development committee. Did we get any other applicants?
Didn't we formulate the committee the other day, or?
Well, somebody else, what's her name, Jude from the lower Bucks County Chamber of Commerce said she might apply.
I've been looking in the, in the folder to see, I haven't seen her application.
Any applications?
No, we didn't get any new applications.
But if we formulate this committee, we could still accept applications, correct?
Sure.
Well, we did formulate the committee.
Yeah, we did.
You did.
On it last week, remember?
Yeah, and so what's the next step with this committee?
Well.
All of the world's problems.
Olivia will contact them, let them know that they've been approved for the committee.
Has that happened, no?
We're putting the letters together today.
And then.
By postal mail, you're gonna send something by postal mail?
Yes.
You know, I still got, haven't got that check from the government?
And, and at that time, I guess they'll decide when they want to meet. They have to organize, pick their chairman, vice chairman and so on. And, you know, either come up with a regular meeting date, you know, whatever they want, first Mondays and whatever they want to, you know, convenient for them, and then start, you know, meeting.
Yes.
And that's, that's pretty much the process.
That's exactly right.
And so, I mean, what do we have, what is our maximum, you said 11? You got 11 members on?
No, I think that the most recent resolution, which was the one Micah sent after the fact, was, was, was nine, Micah?
I think it was nine.
Up to nine, up to nine.
That's still an awful lot of opinions running around.
I think we appointed seven, right? Did we appoint seven?
Yes.
Yeah, so we meet the requirement of the resolution.
Okay.
And Dick Weaver called me in and, and I, I let him know that he was on it, that we had made, I think it was the next day, we were talking about another, talking about finance committee stuff, and, and I mentioned that he was appointed, so he'll be looking for his letter.
So does the letter specify what they should be doing to initiate a first meeting and so on?
Or will, yeah.
Yeah, Olivia will put that information in the letter.
Okay.
Any, any new business to discuss? Dave, do we have any need for an executive session off of this?
We do not, but I'm gonna be sending everybody an email for your availability Wednesday, Thursday or Friday of this week to review the proposed settlement of the, what started out as 27 townhomes on Durham Road just north of the township building. This is the Durham Partners Group thing that we've got down to a medical office building and a daycare center. So I'm going to be sending out availability, asking for availability for an executive session Zoom to talk about that.
And what, what does the executive session entail? Is there any litigation, is there, we're not purchasing land?
Litigation, litigation. It's a zoning hearing board matter that is, is being, it's, it's a matter of litigation.
Okay. Is that something that we can discuss now? Or do we need?
I'd rather, I'd rather get everybody, the, Micah, what do you think? I, I, I'd rather get everybody the settlement and have everybody take a look at it.
Right, you need to notify the board 24 hours, correct?
Yeah, the board has to be notified 24 hours in advance of, of a topic. We can't just start throwing topics now onto it. Plus, this is a work session, that needs to be an executive.
Well, yeah, but, but there have been requests for executive sessions during the course of the meeting. So that's not, the, the meeting is, is 24 hours notice, but an executive session can be requested of any board member at, at any meeting, so I, I don't.
Technically, technically, the sunshine law says if you're gonna have an executive session, that you have to let the members know at least 24 hours in advance of the, of the topic of the executive session. I, I don't want to get into trouble with somebody saying, when did you talk about this? I, I'd rather just have it a little later.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to come back on a Wednesday.
Wednesday, Thursday or Friday. Preferably 11 AM, something like that.
On Friday, I.
John, I can't, but I can't do this now because I, I just gotta send out an email to get everybody's.
Okay, on Friday, Dave Oxley and I are meeting about the town hall, so at noon time, that's just.
So it won't be Friday at noon.
Right.
Very good.
All right, thanks, guys.
All right, so I guess no further action, so I will take adjournment. All right. Have a great day, nice out.
Everybody.
Thanks for input, Alan.
Glad to help. Bye-bye.